Yeah?
Counselor Hanlon.
Yeah.
Counselor Sichetta.
Yeah.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yeah.
Counselor Napolitano.
Here.
Counselor Simonelli.
Here.
Counselor McKinnon.
Here.
Seven members present, Mr. Chairman.
The allegiance of the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible liberty and justice for all. Before we start, I just have a couple of remarks. Joe McGonagall away on family commitment. Mike Markage is away on family commitment. And that is it right now. Actually Freddie Capone is away also on a family commitment. Please read the order.
Order from his honor, the mayor, in accordance with provisions of section fourteen, the Everett City Charter, I hereby call a special meeting of the city council. The subject matter, subject confirmation by the honorable city council, I hereby appoint Michael A. Benoni to the position lieutenant in the Everett Fire Department.
Fable action and second it, second it on this order.
Mr. Chairman on the order, on the order, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Uh, can we, can we have the, whoever the fire department, I guess, before us? Make that a formal motion.
We have a second on that motion, please?
I'll second it.
Jay Rodriguez, Assistant City Inspector.
Thank you. Mr. Hanlon.
Mr. Chairman, through you to our fire department. I'm reading the city charter.
Yeah.
And the city charter under section three point three says, "The mayor shall appoint, subject to the confirmation of such appointments by the city council," under section two dash ten. And section two dash ten says, "The mayor shall must submit to the city council the names of each person the mayor decides to appoint to any city office as a department head or as a member of a multi-member body, but not including any position which is subject to civil service law." And my understanding is that the police and fire department run the civil service law.
That's correct.
The reason I'm making this is because I don't want a month from now or two years from now, someone to come back and say, "We made a mistake." I have no problem with the appointment, I just want to make sure the appointments are done correctly. So what's the answer?
What's the, I'm not sure what the question is.
It says that we cannot appoint anyone that's under civil service law.
Under two dash ten we can, but under civil service law, each firefighter has to be dual-sporting.
Okay, that I need to see, can you get that from me somewhere?
I can ask Colleen, she usually handles the civil service side stuff. Uh, that's, that should be annual, but this is per form of stuff.
I mean, this is, this is approved by the state. States give us the authority to do what this says exactly.
Yeah.
And it supersedes most Massachusetts general laws. Because they, they approve it.
The charter doesn't supersede a single Massachusetts general law.
No, I, I know, but this approves a lot, there's a question this, this supersedes.
Is there a question between state law and local law?
Yeah, who appoints, who approves? Yeah.
Um, state law supersedes, right. Yeah, state law, state law would carry it. There's a, if, if there's a, if there's a contrary provision, state law would carry it.
Okay, but we're gonna get that, see that?
Yeah, that's, that's not a problem.
Okay, well, I'd like to see it before we appoint. Is that a problem?
Um, I'm sure, well, Mike, Colleen, Colleen's not here tonight. Uh, she's covering, I can ask Melissa, she, she carries this stuff as well.
Okay, alright, now, uh, that's alright.
I can find out the answer for you, you can give me five minutes, it's not a problem.
You can?
Yeah.
I'll, I'll wait, if that's alright, let's give this, yeah? I make a motion, we take a five-minute recess?
Motion made and, seconded, to take a five-minute recess. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes, ayes, you have.
Hey buddy. What's going on? Did you?
That's on the phone. Mike, shut that off.
Hi, John.
Everybody here, Jim, we, we contain.
Uh, actually, this is, this is too fast.
Oh, okay.
Take a look, take a look at this.
Just says that here too? I'm not even gonna question that. Well, we gotta have the, the, the.
No problem, buddy.
You have two committee meetings. I got none, I go home with these. Yeah.
They're both at six o'clock, right?
Yeah.
Technically legislative affairs in the second. Cause we're, we're going through in the process, we're going through the, uh, the water, so it's. Cynthia, we got you. Cynthia, we get you. We're, we're, there's just a corner, the ways and means. Fred's, Fred's gonna be on the line, so there's the three of us going through the process. At this point, you know, just get aside.
Good thing I came, I wasn't gonna come.
Good to find a job. John, K. Are you listening? John. I got a call back from the East End. From the other East End, got a call back that Matt I was telling you about. Now all of a sudden you're saying, oh, you never heard. I never heard. Davis, we talked to the, uh, the investigators and, uh, they don't really take it back yet. Any investigators came out telling me. That's the thing. He was, he was in, uh, in intensive care. He wasn't, when they pulled him out of, he wasn't expected to survive. So, you know, really trying to make sure that. Yeah, cause fifty words went out of my mouth. Okay, I lived in Maine for three years, always saw I'd go back, another body by the cold. You know, so the last couple of years, I'm, I'm rethinking this most grand idea. Can't stand Florida to live, but, I don't know. We'll go west, not to live in, you know? If you want, you want insects, you wanna, you wanna throw salmon on, that's fine. It's not my cup of tea. Florida. Yeah? Was it Tennessee, I saw, I saw insects you could, you could throw salmon. Ridiculous.
Mr. Hanlon? Yes, you have to appoint. The ordinance?
Yeah.
No, the ordinance. The, the ordinance requires the appointment, subject to confirmation. The chief of the fire department and other firefighters shall be appointed by the mayor, subject to confirmation by the city council.
What he was looking for, Mr. Rodriguez, was the state civil service.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter, the ordinance.
That supersedes.
It doesn't matter what civil service says, this, this is the ordinance would control. It's a different vehicle, counsel.
Excuse us very, thanks, thank you very much for sharing tonight.
Mr. Chairman, with the information that we have, I'm, I'm, just want to say that I'm not happy with it. And, um, I will be noted as accepting to this, I will, I will vote for it though. But, uh, so I'd like to move fable action, I mean, uh, previous question.
Previous question?
Yep.
Stable action on the order.
Motion made for fables action on the order and a.
And second.
Please read the order.
Counselor D'Alisola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Sichetta.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yeah.
Seven ayes, zero nays. Mr. Chairman.
You have adjourned, you have confirmed and adjourned. Congratulations, please come up.
How you doing? Raise your hand. If you have me, I, Michael A. Benoni.
I, Michael A. Benoni.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Yeah, faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a lieutenant.
As a lieutenant.
For the Everett Fire Department.
For the Everett Fire Department.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Aggravate to the rules.
Aggravate to the rules.
Regulations.
Regulations.
Laws.
Laws.
Ordinances and charter.
Ordinances and charter.
Of the city of Everett.
Of the city of Everett.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
Thou bear true faith and allegiance.
That I do tru- faith and allegiance.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And laws of the Commonwealth.
And laws of the Commonwealth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
Thou bear true faith and allegiance.
That I do.
Bear true faith and allegiance.
True faith and allegiance.
To the United States of America.
To the United States of America.
And support the Constitution of the United States.
And support the Constitution of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Why don't you bring one of the family members to come up and, I just have his brother. Yes.
I want to congratulate Michael, I think he wants to make a speech. Uh, I'd like to invite his brother Joe, every police officer to come up and pin his badge on him.
I see the pinning. Don't go anywhere, Chip. Do it right now, Joey.
Please.
Don't stab him.
You have a couple pictures with us. Right, ladies. Get Joey in.
Sounds, sounds are wrong again.
Alright, I, I totally blanked out on the opening. Congratulations, congratulations. You guys can come right here and take this. I know.
I think I was an angel, sorry. I like. See, I'm, I'm wondering if you can't stop it, but the other two members of the city, there's only, there's only three of us here. So, there's no, there's no, the only thing. What do we got, you got a form for us? Oh, I guess you would. Then there's no reason for what we, what we started.
Alright, this is the committee on legislative affairs and elections. This is Thursday, May fifteen, twenty fourteen. We're at six oh seven PM. I have Counselor Simonelli. I have Counselor Napolitano.
Here.
And I have Counselor Hanlon. I have three members present, I do have a quorum. The first piece of business, this is the order, uh, by Counselor Michael Markage as president, that the city council and the mayor's office work to develop a snow shovel ordinance for the city of Everett.
Can we write? Yeah. Can we write up? Mr. Chairman, if you could, uh, request you clear the hall so we can continue on with our next meeting. Thank you, thank you. Uh, before we start, uh, Councilman Joe McGonagall will be unable to attend because of, uh, family matters. Uh, please, uh, state your name and your title, please.
Jay Rodriguez.
Okay.
Well, sorry, can I call you, or not?
Thank you.
Sir Dr. Please meet you, you're on the pressure, one, the copy of the draft amendment, two, the video, I will contact you by the floor, I'd rather get two now, three, if you copy the minutes, and that is all.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
Um, what is that you gave me?
The last meeting you asked me to bring a copy of the video, I'll give you copies of video of the public meeting that was held, welcome to the one, that's a copy of the video.
Okay, thank you.
And, and after that, I'll copy the minutes from that meeting, um, it was kind of quick, I'm very, what I meant, I mean, but I didn't know if you wanted to watch it or if you were too much.
And we have, this is.
This is the draft amendment that I gave you last time, and then this, you were asking to, um, add something for the waiver, you got last one, it could be a negative, it could be hard, it's definitely a waiver, so that's adding the rest.
Uh, question from the chair. As far as the waiver goes, is this also for the, uh, disabled people too also?
The language, um, in here, so, the language in here, the executive director, he started, he's sorry, it's a waiver, and it seems like he's based in the company, it's not just, that's, sorry, I'm never gonna. Launches physical disability, and by Angel Hatchett. And they were going to say, um, that the waiver was also, every union member cannot meet criteria, and that a waiver should award every person's health access, and the elderly's consent on the compensation, which is often, maybe, time for E homes.
Uh, report again, is, is there a, a, an age as far as the elderly go, or how they contain, how they make it, uh, is there an age limit?
If we use a waiver, um, that elderly benefit of the property happiness, it would be seventy, and in the quality, you have seventy, and fair level quality. Um, that's dependent, if you did a waiver along the way of the elderly benefit.
Taxes, that's a state law. That sets that.
Mr. Hanlon. Chair, good questions, Chairman. You know what the threshold, poverty level is? The child. Currently, yeah, currently, when we wrote the ordinance a couple of years ago, it was about, for, for a person, a single person living on the road, it was about nineteen thousand dollars a year. For a family of four, um, it was about thirty-five thousand. Um, but that not, not wouldn't necessarily fall under the exemption for the waiver, uh, because every, every person under there would have to be either sixty-five or older. So, it's about, it's about nineteen or twenty thousand dollars a year. If we, it's, it's an easy chart that we can look up and we can give it to you, it's no problem.
Uh, Mr. Pop, wait, Haltow. Thank you. Counselor Napolitano.
My understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, 'cause I've been away from it for a bit, but, uh, residents that have their properties in trust are not eligible for those exemptions, right?
It, there, there are some properties that are in trust that are, and some that are not. Um, I'd have to get more information on it from Pam, but my discussion with her in the past is it has to do with who the beneficiaries are, um, and who the trustee is, and that's how they determine if they're eligible or not. I'd be happy to bring more information about that to the next meeting, if you'd like.
Okay.
Okay.
The only reason I'm asking is, uh, first, I wasn't aware that there was a distinction, some qualify, some don't.
Yes.
Uh, so I definitely would want to know more about that.
Sure, happy to do that.
The other thing is that, you know, there are, just because of, and I run into this, uh, you know, talking about, in the city, every time there's an election, um, you know, there are people who legitimately, or I should say financially, would qualify. And the only thing that's keeping their finances together is the fact that they have their properties in trust.
In trust, yeah.
And of course, in that, those plain sort of situations, again, I'll feed that on people I've spoken with, who tell me that they don't qualify.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, that's something that I'm, I'm a little concerned with it being solely on. through, you know, human involvement, that could be, could cause a dangerous situation for people walking.
I mean, your, my, my comment, and this is what we discussed before, is that after the sidewalk is cleared, someone else cleans off the car, puts snow on the sidewalk, and they're gone. Who do we go after? You can't have the homeowner, because he hasn't cleared the sidewalk, but he has. And I can, I can cite cases, every single solitary victim, that this has happened. So what do we do in that situation?
It would still be the homeowner's duty to keep their sidewalk clean, just like it would be the homeowner's duty to.
And how often does the homeowner have to do that?
It gives you, um, if you look, it gives you within ten hours of the end of the snowfall to make sure that it's clean.
And then it's covered again.
We would, yeah.
It wouldn't.
What I'm saying, that people on Main Street have a problem, because they clear their sidewalks, and it's, well, not as soon as it's cleared, but hours after it's cleared, it's filled again by snow people.
Yeah, I, I, in that case, it would just be like, like anything else, if you got a ticket, it would be like if I threw trash in your lawn and you got a ticket, right? You'd appeal the ticket, and say that this wasn't my trash, it was thrown in my lawn, it would be the same situation, there would be an appeal process, um, that you would follow, under forty U, um, that we follow with all of our tickets that we write.
I hope so. Okay, thank you.
It has to be, that's the way the tickets are written.
Because it's, it's going to be a problem, I, it's going to be a problem for me to start off, because I know, I faithfully clean my sidewalk.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
You come by, the sidewalk, two days after the storm, and say, this guy never shovels anything, look at the junk that's on the sidewalk.
Right, of course.
And I do my shovel for a long, long time, because I enjoy it.
Right.
You know, I do what I do with it.
Not me, you can come down my house.
But the thing is that, I know this is going to happen, it's going to happen, not just to be, but anybody who lives on Main Street, on Broadway, on Elm Street, on these major, you know, little roads, it happens.
Right, well, there's due process for every ticket written from the City of Everett, so you would have your hearing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilor Hall, Tom.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be honest, I'm on the other side of the city, and I actually experienced the same type of problem.
I love it.
I have a built, I have a commercial space on the, to the right of me, my driveway, uh, drought, the sidewalk is hardly ever cleared to the corner, except whatever space, pathway, we shovel out. And on the left, on the other, opposite side, I mean, I have a large apartment building that, with absentee landlords, that there's never any shoveling.
Frustrating.
So what happens is, the residents that do clear, out of the path from the gate, that snow all ends up in front of my house after we've already cleared that down. You know, it, it is frustrating to have to keep going back out, go back out, go back out. That's one of the reasons why I always had a problem with snowing on the ordinance, because it's, it's tough to, you know, stand atop of.
Well, the good news is, those people will be required to completely clear their property for all their tenants, so you wouldn't, you know, you wouldn't see as much of the person kind of kicking their way out anymore, you'd see them having, have a company come in and clean their property, or be fined, so, in a lot of ways, that may improve things for you as well.
The, the ordinance itself, in the draft, it tries to achieve a certain balance between, you know, the needs of, of the people that, that shovel every, and most of the people that live in the city shovel diligently, faithfully, they clean, they clean all their, they, they clean their streets and sidewalk, they clean their sidewalks in front of their home, uh, and then there's the other part that don't. And those, they, and it's, so it's about finding the balance between, you know, yeah, you're going to get some, you're going to get some snow on your sidewalk, but there's also the community benefit that, that's achieved by requiring the people who aren't shoveling now to shovel, so people will walk, and walk in the, in the sidewalk. So the entire, it was, it's, it's a delicate balance, but, you know, in the draft of the ordinance, it's, it's very, very close, I think.
Uh, question from the chair, but it's okay. Uh, Section C, about, about the thirty-six inches, say if a guy does it, you know, a foot or something, or two and a half feet, they're going to be, they will get ticketed.
We're going to eye it, so, um, we'll just eye it, you know, but thirty-six inches is, is ADA compliance for a wheelchair, so that's why that's in there.
But say if you just make a, a one shovel path, you know, to your house to the street, and maybe a one shovel there going down to the next guy's house.
The ordinance will require three feet, so if, I mean, this is a draft, it could be changed if you'd rather have it be a foot, but the reason that it was drafted in this way in the beginning was because of ADA compliance for the three feet, for a wheelchair.
So if it isn't three feet, they're going to get a ticket?
Correct.
And the ticket is, how much is the ticket?
It's twenty-five dollars for the first offense.
I really don't agree with that, I mean, some people cannot. Okay, Councilor Hall, Tom.
Um, just, on, on that portion of the fine, uh, it's, it increases per violation.
It's one dash, yeah, one dash eight, so twenty-five, fifty, a hundred, three hundred.
Okay, in this particular type of ordinance, would this be reset by the season?
Typically, we.
See, when I, when I think about the example, you get a twenty-five dollar ticket this year.
No, typically, we reset it by the year, right.
Next year, it's up to the next year. Should it reset per season?
Typically, we reset it by the year, um, that's typically what you would see, unless it's like, an example of something we don't reset is a legal apartment. Um, if the, if the, basically, if it continues to exist, right, um, we would, we would charge you twenty-five, fifty, a hundred, three hundred, um, so, but if not, then you usually get reset.
I, I guess, next, so only because this is a seasonal issue, I'd like the season to change.
By season, okay. I actually, you know, it, it could go two ways, you could do it by season, or you could do it by, by storm. So, you know, twenty-five dollars the first day, if you, second day, the snow's still there, that's the fifty dollar fine, a hundred dollars for the third day, then when the snow all melts, it kind of starts again. Um, it's up to you, really, but.
I think I'd rather, the season would be.
Season?
Season would be easier to monitor. With a storm, you open up a possibility of, now it is.
Two storms, so two storms in a week.
Was it really a storm, you know, we, I didn't really get much coverage.
Right.
You know what I'm saying, I think it, I think it just keeps it cut and dry.
Okay, so seasonal, the trust, and the poverty level so far. Okay.
Should I, what have, is that you, gentlemen?
I'll, I'll make a motion for favorable action.
Sorry, before we do that, I have one more question.
Okay, Councilor Hammer.
Section F, it says that the, um, each violation shall constitute a separate offense, for which a separate and additional fine may be imposed.
Yeah, this was what we were just discussing, discussing, and Councilor Napolitano suggested that we change that language so that it resets seasonally instead of every twenty-four hours. So, and seasonally, you would get the twenty-five, fifty, one hundred, instead of every day being another offense.
So if it snows in, at, and past a ten-hour period, if it's left for ninety-six hours, you'd receive, for the first twenty-four hour period, you'd receive a twenty-five dollar fine, the second twenty-four hour period, you'd receive a fifty dollar, a hundred, three hundred, for each day that you, that you go without, without clearing yourself.
So we, we don't want that? Is that what I'm saying?
My suggestion was that, well, I hadn't thought of it in the twenty-four hour basings like that, but my main concern was that it not go beyond the following years, in other words, I wouldn't want a, a penalty, you know, a fine to, whatever rate it is in, whatever they could find at, let's say in March, I wouldn't want to see it pick up at that level next December. I'd like to see it reset.
So you'd have it re, you'd have it reset on, like, May first.
The, the twenty-fives, the, the penalties are, are tiered, so it starts off at twenty-five for the first offense.
Fifty.
Fifty, the second offense.
A hundred, three hundred.
Three hundred. So this would, this would basically, at the end of the season, would reset that, so next winter, if you have another problem, it's not going to start off at three hundred, it's going to start off at twenty-five. That's all I was getting at. I hadn't really thought about it in.
Whether you want to be fined, right, do you want to find daily, or do you want to find by storm?
But what constitutes a year, is it a calendar year, or is it a snow year?
Well, that's why I said season.
Right, season.
You probably, you'd probably set a hard date and say that it would reset on May first, because, you know, the, you know, meteorological, because you're not going to get any snow in May, so on May first, if it resets the clock.
Do you know that one, certainly?
We hope so, knock on wood.
I am, I am, hopefully, I am cautiously optimistic, although stranger things have happened.
And I just, my question was that sentence, it says, which, in which a separate or an additional fine may be imposed.
So the question is, how you want it to be set up? Do you want it to be set up so that every day that the snow is not removed is an additional fine? Or once per storm?
No, that's not what I'm talking about, I'm just saying that we may should change shell.
Well, okay, so you absolutely, May just gives discretion, you don't want any discretion.
If you're saying maybe, that means.
Shell be imposed, okay.
He gets away with it, he does.
Yeah, you're right, shell, shell's fine. That's easy enough, okay.
I don't know, for the questions, please.
Actually, I, I actually do have another question.
Okay.
All right, so what amendment, just to, I was actually going to make a motion that we, that we, we make a recommendation, but we just, we're talking about some changes, where, what are we looking at?
You wanted, um, okay, so, um, you want to know how, about the trusts, and how you qualify for the LD exemption, then you want to change it seasonally, you have some questions about what the poverty level was, and then, um, I'm going to change that, May to shell.
All right, in that case, I want a motion, I want a motion for further time.
Okay.
So we'll give time to the ordinance, yeah.
Sounds good.
More finished body.
Sure. I will send you the ordinance in advance, so you have time to review it, since we'll be, hopefully be at the end.
Motion paid second for further, for the time. Hall, Taylor?
Aye.
No opposed?
Yeah, I have it. Right, item number two is a resolution out by Councilor Leo McKinnon and Mike Makhasey that the Committee on Legislative Affairs and Elections established an ordinance that all wheelchairs and electric scooters have a three-foot flag somewhere around the scooter or wheelchair to prevent accidents.
I agree. Could we invite, uh, Councilor McKinnon up, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Have Mr. McKinnon come forward.
Excuse me?
Have Mr. McKinnon, uh, Councilor McKinnon come forward?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for appearing, we appreciate it, you guys.
All right.
Name and title, please.
Councilman John Leo McKinnon, Ward Four.
Dave Rodriguez, Assistant City Solicitor.
Thank you.
Uh, on, on this piece here, uh, it's the wheelchair piece, that's what we're looking at, uh, and also the, I believe, scooters, is that, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, uh, I ha, I have a few pieces, that's why, I just want to make sure I'm testifying on the right one. Thank you. Um, I, I was notified by a number of constituents concerned about this. I know that President Michael Makhasey was not able to appear tonight, but we both feel the same way on this matter. He had put this prior, as, uh, when we had the prior city government in, and, um, there was a reply back, but it wasn't in time for this session. So now we're in a whole new government, and, uh, we'd like to actually reapply this and see if we could do something with it. And what I would like to see, if there was, you know, any type of, uh, laws that were out there on the books for this, and also, uh, see if we could apply it to the City of Everett, to where, uh, we're not going to have tragedies happen, to where a wheelchair goes out, a motor scooter goes out, or a motorized wheelchair goes out in front of a car, and that car does not see that individual, and actually strikes and hits it, and then ends up in a death. So that's what we're trying to do here now. Um, we're trying to make the streets safer, uh, if we can do this in a, in a manner or a way, uh, as an ordinance or an order, uh, I would greatly appreciate that. So I would like to answer any questions or concerns that the board has now, and please feel free.
I'd just like to say, I think, I think this is a great ordinance, because you're seeing a lot more scooters, wheelchairs around, and they come out, and this is just protect the, the safety of the people, and also pedestrians, and the people driving cars, so I just think it's a great thing, so, I hope we can work on it and, uh, get something, uh, an ordinance passed, yeah?
Thank you, sir.
Councilor Hall, Tom.
Do you have any examples of any, any other municipalities, uh, that have a similar ordinance, something we can use as a guide?
I can get that for you. I, I can actually work with the city solicitor office and actually bring up, I believe, they have different laws that are out there that are.
Was there something drafted?
I believe there was something drafted, but, uh, Mr. Makhasey's not here tonight, so he would, he would have that draft. I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared for that.
Councilor Hammer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I have a problem with the three-foot flag, and, uh, the reason for that is that if the three-foot flag is from the street level, three-foot high, that's not going to be above the head of the person in the wheelchair or in the scooter. If it's going to be mounted on the wheelchair at a higher place, let's say a foot above it, that's going to be four foot, but we're still only talking about four foot being the height of the floor, which is still, if I'm in a wheelchair, it's still not higher than my head. So I, those kinds of things, I think should be like six foot, and, uh, because, even, even if you're thinking a person's coming by an automobile, how high is an automobile off the street? That flag is going to be hidden by, you know, I mean, I'm talking about, out into this park, at the corner.
Mm-hmm.
So if you're coming down, and the fellow's going to make a turn, he can't see you, but he behind that automobile, and, you know, especially if it's on a downhill slope, and those wheelchairs are moving, it's kind of hard to stop them. So I would think that three foot is like, maybe eight foot, I, I don't know, I don't know, you know, but at least, at least six foot would be, this high, that's, that's pretty good, that's like the top of the car, so maybe eight foot is where it should be. Uh, and, uh, and I'm saying eight foot above the surface of the ground, no matter where it's attached to the bike, it's attached to the back of the chair, it only has to be by four foot, so, as long as it gets up to that seven or eight foot mark, whatever we wanted to do, so, I think someone, somewhere should at least get an idea of how things are, how tall those things are, because I see, you know, and I, um, you know, you go on vacation, you go to tourist areas, a lot of those wheelchairs, uh, you know, motorized scooters are programmed, and they do have large flags on them, they have like a Whitman Kennedy handle flag, you know, so, uh, maybe that's, when we start looking to this, we should start to say that, maybe the flag could be much higher than three feet, because three feet is about, come in.
Yeah, I was utilizing that number, and I was hoping that one of you gentlemen tonight would actually increase it, so, I, I commend you for doing that, and, uh, I, I agree, so that would be part of the change then to this piece.
But we definitely would need to take into account a couple of things, like what is the, what is the average height of a doorway, you know, if you have something that's more rigid attached to a wheelchair, you know, you got a potential problem if they catch the top of a, of a.
We have, we, what.
Average being what it is.
What we have to do is, we have to look at disability law, and we also have to look at, you know, disabled individuals that have the use of powered scooters, uh, power wheelchairs, wheelchairs themselves, manual or powered, uh, we have to look at all these types of things, so, this is, this, just the beginning of this, and I would ask that we grant further time, so that we could actually do some research and possibly get, um, some type of format from Mr. Makhasey as well, so, if, uh, that wouldn't be out of the question, or out of the realm.
Um, we have a, a disability commission in Massachusetts.
Yes, we do.
And I can remember that they used to go to stores to measure the distance between towns, and so on and so on, so, uh, maybe they might have some sort of, uh, kind of guideline for us to say, you know, the flags have to be within.
If it's going to be mounted on the wheelchair at a higher place, let's say a foot above it, that's gonna be four foot, but we're still only talking about four foot being the height of the floor, which is still, if I'm in a wheelchair, it's still not higher than my head. So, I, those kinds of things, I think should be like six foot, and because, even if you're thinking a person's coming by an automobile, how high is an automobile off the street? A flag is gonna be hidden by, you know, I mean, I'm talking about automobile that's parked at the corner. So, if you're coming down, and the fellow's gonna make a turn, he can't see you, but you're behind that automobile, and you know, especially if it's on a downhill slope, and those wheelchairs are moving, it's kind of hard to stop them. So, I would think that three foot is like, maybe eight foot, I don't know, I don't know, you know, but at least, at least six foot would be this high, that's pretty good, that's like the top of the car, or maybe eight foot is where it should be. And I'm saying eight foot above the surface of the ground, no matter where it's attached to the bike, it's attached to the back of the chair, it only has to be by four foot tall, as long as it gets up to that seven, eight foot mark, whatever you wanted to do. So, I think someone, somewhere should at least get an idea of how things, of how tall those things are, because I see, you know, when I, you know, you go on vacation, you go to tourist areas, a lot of those wheelchairs, you know, motorized scooters are programmed, and they do have large flags on them, they have like a whippantana handle flag, you know? So, maybe that's, when we start looking to this, we should start to say that, maybe the flag should be much higher than three feet, because three feet isn't that...
Yeah, I was utilizing that number, and I was hoping that one of you gentlemen tonight would actually increase it, so, I commend you for doing that, and I agree. So, that would be part of the change then to this piece.
Definitely would need to take into account a couple of things, like what is the, what is the average height of a doorway? You know, if you have something that's more rigid attached to a wheelchair, you know, you got a potential problem if they catch the top of a...
We have, what, what...
...average being what it is.
What we have to do is, we have to look at disability law, and we also have to look at, you know, disabled individuals that have the use of powered scooters, power wheelchairs, wheelchairs themselves, manual or powered, we have to look at all these types of things. So, this is, this, just the beginning of this, and I would ask that we grant further time, so that we could actually do some research and possibly get some type of format from Mr. Makhazie as well. So, if that wouldn't be out of the question, or out of the realm...
We have a disability commission in Massachusetts.
Yes, we do.
I can remember that they used to go to stores to measure the distance between towns, and so on, and so on. So, maybe they might have some sort of guideline for us to say, you know, the flags have to be whatever, whatever foot tall, whatever's above the ground. Can you do that kind of research? This is the disability commission. All right, okay.
I just wanna mention that there was, I received something through the mail from one of my constituents on this as well. It quoted a news article, it showed a wheelchair that was hit and struck by a truck, and the individual that was in the wheelchair did not make it, so that's what prompted me to actually get involved with this. I feel it's a great piece, I feel that it's a good piece, and I feel that it's needed in this city. I do not want to put any type of hindrance on these people to actually, you know, make it a fine or something to that effect, if that's where we're going with that. But I would, I would like to make sure that they're well aware of what this ordinance is, and we may have to actually put something on that to enforce it. So, I mean, I wanted to talk about that as well.
Mr. Chairman, also, there are, and I know you've probably all seen, you know, the antennas that have, they separate with elastic, and they snap together, because, you know, if you see, usually, sometimes too, when people are in a wheelchair, they may be going into some sort of mobile transportation, and the wheelchair gets put into the trunk of the car, they fold up, they go to the trunk. So, it would mean also that the antenna of, some of the flag, they have to be, you know, dismembered somehow, with this to the trunk. So, and I have seen those things, that, you know, they were there, they snap apart, you've seen them in tents, tents have, they snap apart. And that's kind of a whipantana too, so that might be the answer to that, you know, if you have a, so it just snaps apart, but I think, okay, we got it.
Okay.
Just one more question.
Yes, sir.
The, these flags, would the city be paying for them, or would the person have to buy them themselves?
See, now, that's a question that I just raised, I wanna make sure that we're not making any type of demands from these people on them, and I wanna actually do some research on it to find out how we can go about that, if they would have something at the disability committee or commission's level, that where it would be a statewide funding grant, or it could be funded by a grant that we could possibly grab. If we could do something like this for these people, that would, I think that would be a great thing that we could accomplish here, so.
I'd like to make a motion then, to grant further time, and that if our, our, the, Carolyn can do some research on that with the disability commission, the state disability commission, anytime the sponsors could produce anything from the past session.
Yes.
Might have put together, we can, you know, put everything together and come up with an approach on this.
Motion paid, to grant further time, and Carolyn do some, some, get some information on disability, the disability committee and...
Commission, state disability.
State disability commission. Alon Taylor?
Mr. Chairman, also, also onto that, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to do that, we should, we should actually point out their interest in the flags, the height of the flag, and also to find out if the disability has any place where the funds can be appropriated for the people that need these type of flags.
Such as grants, what type of grants we would actually apply for as a city, for these type of people to come in and actually utilize funds for that.
And also grant, find some grant money, maybe help pay for these flags also. Alon Taylor?
Aye.
You oppose? The ayes have it?
Make a motion, oh, excuse the president, everything?
Make a motion, make a motion, you got your turn.
Thank you.